Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Tuesday, May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and the time is five thirty P M. We're here for the regular session of the Copel City Council. We do have a quorum present, so I'm calling the meeting to order. We will be convening into executive session in the first-floor conference room. At the end of the first, at the end of the executive session, I'll come back out and announce that we will be entering into work session, at which time the public will be invited to join us. Thank you for your patience. Thank you.
Uh, last meeting, uh, we walked through some of the details related to the power of the needs to help me out for the public. It's definitely better, uh, opportunity to So what you have to tell you is, um, the, as they say, the best of the backlog. So I wanted to just kind of walk you through this. Our current wage including franchise fee and education fee, so franchise fee is fifteen percent, our education fee depends on, in nineteen thirty-three. Our contract goes through basically October twenty-sixth. So if you just take their, uh, position that is three percent on the year, uh, in twenty twenty-five will be ten to ninety-one, in twenty twenty-six will be twenty-six. So that, that's the test, uh, to do with how well people are. So, uh, what the proposal there is, is one crash cart, one recycling cart, two kinds of week cash pickup, one kind of week recycling pickup, both pickups, one kind of week, but it's a little different, because I have to be a part of it. Um, it is three ways to the same, and household has happened places, so there's a difference. So their proposed base rate is twenty-one, twenty-two. Now, the question to it is, that in November of twenty twenty-eight? Um, whatever the council decides as far as the franchise fee and the education fee, we have on top of that. So if you just take our current setup, so the proposed franchise fee is fifteen percent and the education fee depends on, that would make the base rate twenty-four, fifty. So based on nineteen thirty-three, uh, based on twenty-one, twenty-two, the contract, uh, for help. So that's there, uh, starting from twenty-one, twenty-two, that's the level of that, and that's in November of twenty twenty-six. So, uh, what we're looking to be included in the contract would be, uh, here, where there is six percent, so the annual wage now is guaranteed to five percent annually. Uh, just to put that perspective, over the last, uh, five years, the CPI rate was twelve point nine four. Uh, those, uh, in that, those, uh, those, uh, things. We asked, because we got to know more specifics, uh, to increase the storm three to another amount, fifteen thousand to twenty-five thousand. But the best payout is just sort of the same factor that we've talked about was every year ago. It was down, yeah, and, uh, yeah, uh, I was actually trying to. Anyway, so at the time, we were able to grow off the parents, sort of locations, and people were bringing their stuff to us. So, and they brought a lot more stuff, sometimes, so, uh, that's why we increased that. Uh, putting all the information together is tracking and being able to track. Um, that's, you know how it was when folks call us and say that you just sort of, we're going to trust your track, instead of like, oh, they're on the, they're out of the street, or the way that people, well, people, you know, that's what we're trying to do. They can call us, uh, and we can track, but, uh, that was, that was, is that at all, is that the use? No, they have to, I just saw that now. So it's, but it's in the contract, and we're just making sure that's in the agreement. And when a technology, we have a lot of, that's the best, and then they can take a lot of the, they're still. Uh, household housing places, I mentioned, it's services currently provided. Uh, what we found out is that, uh, that cost is a passive cost. It's a late contract for a first car, so while we're picking up and talking to it, that's what the cost is, depending on. Uh, commercial customer, uh, commercial customer, monthly report, similar to the city's financial department, management. And we do that, uh, we want that because, uh, certification, uh, there's commercial accounts, waterway, socialities, and that's in the open. Comfortability, um, so we, I call it a twenty-eight status report, and talking to Jerry, uh, other things that was suggested that we ask for hours also, uh, on the truck. I know the contract has a provision, there's no trust, it's on our, in our system, so it's a living thing here. And so, um, they are in the process of replacing, which is probably capable of, um, based on the age. What we're looking for is, at the start of the contract, as far as the design and the objects, to work with, to start with. They, kind of, in the contract, has, uh, there was the property language, they were to keep that moving there. And then, this is a, like, we should sort of, uh, do that, just like that. Well, basically, there's people, uh, who think about the truck, drive people, they're driving their trucks around. Um, the public works really hard, as well, as, like, they look right now. So they work their entire, go out there, and take their class. A lot of times, uh, in your, how the workforce partners, you have to go out and figure out, if they need to have, kind of, um, of outings, and, uh, you can work with them, work with outings, for, um, uh, maybe, maybe, create a major, uh. Yeah, and then, uh, contract, right now, uh, you know, it's kind of five years ago, so, you all talked about longer term, possibly. So where, where was your contract term, if that, you know, plus, uh, 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 uh? And then, so part of the, uh, also, uh, the, uh, so. That is the proposal, and, uh, doing whatever conversation we had, at the end of the evening, if you would like to be, you know, uh, generally, it's just for, uh, as I said, to move forward, those, uh, finalizing the contract. To finalize the contract, when you're back with the council, so, and then, uh, we, uh, we, uh, we, uh, we, uh, we, uh, we. Would, uh, 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 if you recall, we were saying, uh, again, January ninth, we're doing twenty-eight, that's fine too. But, uh, we need to have a decision made, as far as, are we, so that, that, uh, contract? So, that's my specific request. But if you, I, or, uh, um, way, with, uh, with, uh, 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 uh. Going to our, uh, house of waste, I, I sure remember, uh, you said that last time about the, the customer utilization, trying to house of waste. But if I'm moving, not a lot of the customers, for the, uh, so, uh, so, uh, we, so, we introduced it, we got six minutes, uh, of, uh, of, uh, uh. Um, what Jerry said, when we first started doing this, to achieve a show where it was not, uh, the key type of stuff. And now, uh, now it's gotten to where it's really spread out, it's not, there isn't, uh, a lot of that, especially, like, they think, I'll be careful. You know, if you, uh, don't face anything, but, uh, because it's not, it's not the same corollary, but, uh, and that's what, uh, twenty-four hundred and fifty, uh, uh, uh. So, um, one percent, um, five percent, and, um, it would be, sort of, the first of the five percent, can, uh, be, uh. It's only like, like, our, 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 uh, the franchise fee was instance that they don't touch that, but, so, like, uh, so, it's not that they, certain twenty-one, twenty-two. So those, uh, like, saves the first year, so, uh, the, uh, after, so, so, reporting, you're very, many, uh, uh, basically, uh. Anyway, I use this as a best guideline, anyway, we can say, uh, in a, uh, inflation, we're above three percent, just like, uh, government. I mean, go back and ask, but, I mean. Does it go down to, like, a four percent, uh? But you think that, you know, we didn't say, but, uh, 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 uh. Uh, but, you can, you can offer also, uh, C P I, to, uh, 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 uh. Yeah, so, uh, just if you can, you can question those, uh, who, 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 you, their, their, and, their, and, uh, their, uh, first time, change, uh, 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 uh.
Monday we challenged Jerry, it was a, uh, it's just for us, but it's just, uh, after the meeting, so maybe he has a meeting that day at Paul's pickup. So people are kind of still in the process of, you know, about the, um, so there are, there are, whatever we tell them, they're not going to take it to Paul's pickup. And then, we talked, talked a lot about what we've got, I know there's been, there's been a lot of things happening here because we're getting into how they're looking at this, their truck, they're, you know, they gotta bring another one out the next day, um, to service another, uh, maybe with the base and gifts. Um, certainly a long trip to place that they need to, to, you know, to have a little out, but I don't know where I would put that in here and ask, talk to us if there's somebody we can use to figure to take that out. And, uh, so as, as coming to two areas, it seems, the commercial channel, they just don't quite have that insight, and it's been focused very much on operational costs. And it's easier for them to, to be an early truck to get out of the door at times. And it just comes down to customer service, how much do you want to give them, uh, in your service, and, uh, it was a difference in how people were doing when it's been in the department this way. I actually asked for hours you could put in, just because, because in FYI, hours on the trucks that are running through, I think, immediately, they hire them, you know, um, you know, the past ten years, they'd be something that's running hundreds of thousands of hours, or if they're actually on a, on a, you know, few, you know, businesses, they're still there, they're, 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 they're in it. The, and, and it's, it's basically a blue, blue collar environment, you know, and you just build them, and, and tell them, and then forces them to, and they tell them, that's not that kind of, most trash trucks aren't, but there's a, with the higher end in the commercial business, you need traction always, you're, 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 but, but we need, we need, we need, but that's also a line that I also, I'm, I'm, I'm figuring to hear, you know, now we're asking for it to, 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 to,[292.16]
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, everybody. I may just have to do this without a microphone. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this evening's little ceremony. I don't know exactly what to call it. It's the beginning of a new transition for some of us, like Mayor Protem John John. And it's a, it's a beginning for others like Ramesh Prem and Kumar. So tonight, we've got to honor one of our own. And John, where are you? Could you please come up here? So one of the things you're gonna have to learn is you're not gonna get away with that anonymity anymore. So you're gonna have to be out in front of people. You know, one of the things, John first got elected to the city council in twenty, uh, twenty twenty, which was right after COVID. And that was one of the worst campaign periods I've ever seen. And this guy did things that were just unbelievable. I'm sure it was Judy's plan for you to go to all of the, all of the high school graduates and give them little gifts. That was phenomenal. Some of my best campaign ideas have come from my wife as well. So, you know, um, you know, that was unbelievable. John was elected in twenty twenty and he's served ever since then. He's been something of a, of a, of a base for us to make sure that we don't go off the wall too far. But before being on the, the city council, he served with our Board of Adjustments. He was special counsel for the city of Kapel. He went through the citizens' police advisory, or police academy. He served on the library community builders. He's been a longtime member of the Lions Club. And he's been a member of the DFW Asian American Citizens Council. And you were the founder of the Korean Society, Korean American Coalition in Dallas. So, you know, just, that, that's not an underachiever right there. Couple of things that we've accomplished, and I say we, because it is the city council that's done it. But we've got things that are in works that John's been responsible for. You may be aware that we're having a, a Veterans Plaza built. We're currently right in the middle of that. And that one idea started with this guy right here. That was his idea. He brought it forward. He's gonna be here when we unveil it, and it's gonna be a great thing. So thank you very much for that. You know, there, there, we also have done other things that John's been instrumental in promoting. We got our homestead exemption for seniors raised. And I know he's gonna take complete, uh, uh, he's gonna take every bit of, um, credit for having South Beltline finished, right? He's been a, he's been a huge proponent of, of citizen engagement. I mean, every time we're debating something or discussing something, he's gone, have you thought about what the citizens think? What do you, you know, what do the citizens think about this? He's gone so far is in registering voters to vote and actually transporting voters to the polls. Just a, a huge citizen of the community. His fiscal responsibility, we really need him down in Austin for that. And, uh, you know, prior to, to serving, or after serving this community, he is running for House District 115. And we certainly wish him the best and, uh, just anything we can do to help you. So thank you very much, John. So this would be really easy to turn this into a roast, and it's not gonna be that. But I would like to invite Mr. Andrew Kim, who is president of the Korean Association of Dallas, to come forward. And I've met Mr. Kim many times and, and I, we've developed a, a very good friendship. And he wanted to say a few things about John himself. So, Mr. Kim.
Korean Association really proud with John. I think during the John tenure in the city of Kapel, John has made a remarkable achievement in the reforming city administration and the developing city of Kapel. In particular, he wedged the state of Korean community and Korean Omnican Vine, Esseulimshi, Hanbok Day, and Korean American Day. Therefore, we give this back to the express our deep love and respect, John. And I would like to continue to the good relationship with the city of Kapel. Thank you.
All right, I know that tonight is a city council meeting, so we're fortunate to have our entire city council here tonight. We have, I'm gonna recognize everybody if I can do it by memory. Raise your hand, Jim Walker. Brianna Hinahosta is actually absent tonight. We have Don Carroll. Oh, over there, all right. Kevin Nevels. Bijou Matthew. There we go. And Mark Hill. And, you know, just to give you an idea, when the heavy hitters come out, then you know you've done something really special. So former city council members here, and that's Marvin Franklin. Marvin? If any of our council members would like to come up, Bijou, I think you had something you wanted to say, so come on forward. If any of the rest of the council would like to say anything, please come forward now. And, uh, we'll kind of open it up to the floor after that. So John, it's been a, it's been an honor and a privilege, and thank you very much for your time and your service. I know it's not gonna stop here, so I, I know that we're gonna see you in the community from now on. So, here, Bijou.
Thank you, Mayor John. Mayor Protem John John. Thank you for your service to the city of Kapel. We really do appreciate. I met you in two thousand eighteen. And ever since, we've been, become so close friends, close friends. We attended many of the city events together. We traveled to places together. So we became friends, and our spouses also became friends. So we've become a family friends now. And I just wanted to say thank you for your service to the city of Kapel. And Mayor already mentioned this, that John is a veteran, and thank you for your service to the nation. And John brought this idea of having a veterans' plaza in Kapel. And the city council discussed and debated, and we approved it. Soon, I hope by next Veterans Day, we will have a plaza right behind this building, so that you can come back and inaugurate with us. Thank you. One more thing that Mayor mentioned. When I came to city council in two thousand eighteen, I talked about homestead exemption being increased for our veterans, seniors, and disabled from seventy-five thousand to hundred thousand. And I didn't get much traction at that time, but in two thousand twenty-one, new set of council members came in, including yourself. And we were able to approve that from seventy-five thousand to hundred thousand, which means you pay less property tax, because you are in that category, and it's a tax cut for you. So thank you for your support on that particular initiative. So with all this achievement under your belt, I know you have many to list here. I don't have the ti, we don't have the time to list all of them. I wish you all the best in your future endeavors. I know Mayor mentioned you're running for District 115. We wish you all the best. Our family wish you all the best. Shiji is also here. She best you the best. Thank you very much.
John, I would say it's been a real pleasure serving with you. Your unique perspective on things has been refreshing. Really appreciate your approach for looking out for all the citizens almost any issue we talk about. Questions arise, as, as Mayor Mates have said, you know, have you, have you talked to the citizens? Have we polled them? Have we gotten their input? And, you know, you definitely have a servant's heart. And I think that you're gonna do well at the next level, and I wish you all the best. And you're gonna make Kapel proud.
So what happens when you invite all the politicians to come up and talk? All right, John, first of all, thank you so much. I've, I've enjoyed serving with you the past three years. I remember the very first time we had the opportunity to serve together was on the 2040 Executive Committee. And so, and you see the fruits of our labor there, and, you know, we're very proud about that because we got some of the highest citizens engagement ever for a, um, yeah, a strategic plan, you know, for our community. So I know you and I were both very proud and excited about that. I had the opportunity to, to come on council about six months, months after you came on. And I, I, I would be remiss if I didn't say, there was a, there was a moment there where we got a little sideways. And I, I gotta say that, um, John and I, you know, we, we reached out to each other after that. And we went to that McDonald's. We were talking like for three hours at that McDonald's, and we really found a place of commonality. And really what that came down to was the love of this community. And I saw that, and I saw your heart. And I think that that's where our relationship really grew. So I want to thank you for opening up and kind of letting me in and kind of, kind of understand where you come from and that. The other council members have said, you know, the way that you think, your, your fiscal responsibility is, is unmatched. The way that you advocate and fight for citizens is unmatched in this town. So, you know, every one of these citizens has benefited from your guidance and your leadership. And so, and also, I do have to say this, I appreciate you not diming me out to the mayor or the other council members when last year I was watching the Stanley Cup Western Conference Finals on the dais on my, on my laptop. I appreciate that. So thanks for not letting anybody know about that. Oh geez, everyone's here. Oh, man. But I, I do want to say, you know, from the bottom of my heart, thank you for sharing the seat next to me. We've had many conversations about that. And, you know, I always, just so everybody knows, is, so I am a six-degree black belt in taekwondo. And so I always kept John on his toes a little bit just because of that. So, John, thank you. It's been a pleasure. It's an honor. And we wish you all the best in your next endeavor and best of luck with 115.
Well, John, I'll try not to reiterate what everybody else has said. You're about six months older than me on council, and so we sort of grew up to get, uh, you look younger than I do. No, six months older on council than I am, and so we sort of grew up together, sort of learned ropes together and everything. It's been quite a journey. Really have appreciated. You are always prepared. You're always come ready to be engaged. You have always listened to the citizens, and those things are great. The one thing I have really come to admire about you is that you have a philosophical foundation about you. And when we get asked some of the tough questions and have to make some tough decisions, you always fall back and rely on some of those foundational pieces. And I think that is, at times, what is missing in, in the world of our elected officials. Sometimes it's having philosophical foundations that we can rely on. So I appreciate you having that as an example and that you show that to the community and everything. So I have enjoyed serving with you for the last three years, and we miss serving with you, but good luck on your next endeavors.
Is there anybody else that has a desire to come up and say something about John? Doesn't that feel vulnerable when you make that offer? Listen, I tell you, on behalf of the city, though, there's a couple of gifts down on the table. There, there's the John June Boulevard that is yours to keep. There's a couple of other items down there. And on behalf of the city council, I'd like to present you with this plaque that says "In appreciation, Councilmember John June, Kapel City Council 2024." And it lists the two mayors that you've served under and also all the city councilmen that you have served with. So I hope there's a good place on your desk to put that one. All right, thank you very much. John, one last thing. On behalf of the city, here's a plaque talking about the appreciation for your years of service to the citizens of Capel and from the city of Capel itself. So, thank you for your service. Now, one more thing before we let you say a few words. I'd like to ask Judy to come up, please. Well, either that or I'm gonna give him some roses. Well, now, no, because I know exactly how that is from the spouse's side on my side of the family. Well, it's gonna be my fault, so you'll be okay. Judy, on behalf of the city of Capel, thank you very much. Having a spouse spend as much time with, with the citizens and with the council is really your doing, and you make that happen. So, we really thank you for the sacrifices that you've made on behalf of the city, and wanna thank you and present you with this bouquet of roses. John, since you're practicing on being a professional politician, do you have anything you would like to say?
I have ten pages, so I hope you're ready. So, a couple of weeks ago, when our secretary Crystal was retiring, Mike Lan asked me, he said, "Are you okay?" And I said, "What do you mean?" He goes, "Well, are you okay that your last year is coming up?" And I said, "Yeah, I'm okay." But I'll be honest with you, that leading up to today, I was getting emotional. So, forgive me if I do get a little emotional. But I, but I wanna start by thanking God for all of the blessings that we've seen. You know, there are many things that we could disagree on, but I think we could agree on one thing, that we're all blessed, all of us here. We're blessed to be here. We're blessed to be living in Capel. If you don't live in Capel, I think she started thinking about living to Capel. It's a true story. It's a great city, and John John told me that it was a great city too, so there's no lie. But the, and although not perfect, I can tell you that we live in the greatest country in the world. I wanna thank each of you for being here tonight. My wife Judy, especially, my daughter Ariel, the non-mate kid, but Jim, and my daughter Jessie, who's in here with Spirit, because she's still teaching down in Houston, and my son Sam, my sisters and brother-in-laws, city staff, friends, supporters, community. Thank you from the bottom of my heart. Now, I know some of you are here partying to see Mayor Mains. Councilmember Spinks, he's not here, but Councilmember Neves, Councilmember Matthew, Councilmember newly-elected Councilmember Prem Omar, get sworn in. But I know the reason why you're here. You're here to see me, not them. And I keep that a secret, right? Hey, I could dream, can't I? Speaking of dreams, forty-five years ago, I immigrated to Guam when I was ten years old, two years after my mother passed away. Six years later, I graduated from Donovan Kennedy High School, but didn't have a dream of what I wanted to do. So, we come. So, naturally, I joined the USNAD because my best friend said, convinced me that he can serve the greatest country and see the world at the same time. He was right on both. Got to serve the greatest country on the carrier USS Donovan Kennedy, and saw the world, and made its own part of the two. And I also got to defend our country when we were in conflict with Libya during nineteen eighty-eight, eighty-nine conflict. But that wasn't my dream. So, I left four years later with an honorable discharge, still without a dream, not knowing what exactly to do. But then, one of my dreams came true. The love of my wife, life, my wife Judy, she said yes, and bless her heart, she took a chance on a guy who didn't have a degree, career, financial stability. And soon, we were blessed even more with one, two, three beautiful kids, and son six years later. Now, my wife doesn't like this joke, but I do, I do say this. But I, I used to tell everyone, you know, the reason why we have four kids back then is because we didn't have enough TVs. Now we have TV in every room, and this is true, literally. But, you know, it's funny, because we started, we were really struggling financially, working weekdays, and going to Arlington Trade and Flea Market on the weekends with three other girls, and later with our son. And yet, I found time to volunteer for the community. And of course, it was because my wife, sorry, typo, my, I meant my boss, allowed me to volunteer. And so it began in two thousand's journey of volunteering. And I still believe that to this day, it was one of the best decisions I have ever made. When I assisted seniors in two thousand and four, they came out for the voting booth in the lady saying that I never thought I'd be able to vote in my lifetime because of the process I didn't understand and because of the language barrier. And the following year, many city senior citizens and applicants called me and said, they now got the application membership, and they want to go ahead and start doing the vote. Thirty-six years old, without a degree, education, career, or financial means, the three young daughters, seven, five, four, and in two thousand and state of Sam, I made a difference in someone's life. We have many volunteers here, for sure, and in various capacities. And you know what happens when you serve people, and when you know that you made a difference in someone's life, you wanna do it more. That's what I was. And the funny thing is, I told my wife, I said, you know, I wanna go back to school. And she said, "Why?" I said, "To be a better servant." And she said, "How?" And I said, "I wanna be an attorney and serve the community." And she said, and thinking about it, I'm gonna say, "Are you crazy? You don't have a degree. You want to go back to school after thirty, at age thirty-six with three other kids to be a better servant? Why now, right?" But bless her heart, she said yes. Then I'm thinking, "Oh crap, I'm in trouble now." She said yes, and I have to go ahead and follow through. And by the way, one piece of advice I wanna tell you, that when you go back to school in your older years, late thirties and forties, your mind doesn't really work the way you hoped it would, especially in grad school, law school, you know, and also working part-time to send some money back home. So, I prayed. I prayed a lot. I asked God to help me, please get me over these difficult moments. And there were a lot of difficult moments. I can tell you that's, that's a whole new story, that if he gets me over the, you know, difficult bumps, that I'll stay true to be, true to going back to school, that you have to be a better servant. You know, I don't usually ask for something and be doing something, but he answered my prayer, and he, and the service, serving a community now. I served in various capacities as an average man, and I didn't even see myself running for an office, but because again, I'm just an average man. But what made me think about running is that I wanted to continue making a difference. But more importantly, I wanted to encourage young adults, our future leaders. But by the way, I always say that I'm an average person, just like you, but, you know, I just realized, and I truly believe that I'm an average person, but I realize that a lot of you here are really exceptional, and you are more than average exceptional. So, forgive me, I apologize for comparing myself to you, but you guys really are amazing, and you've made me always learn from you. So, I want to share my story, not because, not to bribe, but not because I'm, you know, my story is the greatest, but, but because I want you know, for those to know that where I am, it's not because I'm smart, but because I was blessed, because he guided me, and I persevered. I wanted, I wanted them to know that straight path out of high school, going to college and getting a job, is slightly the best path. But if, for some, some reason, they happen to take a different path, like me, fall or go off track, like me, that there isn't a path waiting for them to take, and God has a plan for them, even if they don't know what they want to do at their stage of life. They certainly have the gift from God, and to achieve far greater things that us adults parents have, if they put their mind to it and persevere. Same thing that I would say to my kids, something that I didn't hear when I was at their age. And to be honest with you, I believe in sharing that message, I've been, I've been sharing that message is never-ending task. It's something that all of us have to take on, because it's true. It takes a village, for sure. So, when I ran for city council, I said that I would rather tell the truth than any friendship than to vote. I still have the same belief. I still, I said I would make it a priority to go out and listen and learn about some city issues and concerns, so that I could best advocate for them. And I'm sure I've failed at times with you, but I hope you know that I have the best intention, even though the advocacy may not be the standard that you expect. And I wanna say at least this most, that I am the same person that you knew if you knew before I began a council, same person that I am when I, when I was the president of council. And I will be same person if I get the opportunity to serve at the next level. Because at the end of the day, and I always believe this, that I don't think of myself as politicians, but I always, I always think of myself as a servant. Never about me, my personal goals, or agendas. No, it's always been about you, the residents, your issues and concerns, how I could best advocate for you and represent you. And it will be more different in my next journey. Funny thing, my father, who will be ninety next year, he's so funny, you know, he asked me why I wanted to run for city council, and I said, "To serve people." And then he said, "Do you get paid?" I said, "No." He said, "Why are you running?" The other day, I called him, I said, "I'm running for state," and he said, "You know, are you getting paid?" I said, "Yes, but very little, and in fact, I'm actually gonna be losing money, because I'll be down in Austin so long, you know, away from the work." And he, you know, you know what he said. "Why are you doing this? Why are you, you know, come to your senses?" That's what he was saying. But in all seriousness, I wanna thank each of you, right? Because all of you here, you have the passion to serve, to make a difference in people's life, in someone's life, but you are not getting paid, right? If you're getting paid, let me know. But only after my wife's now here, it's because she thinks that I'm, you know, didn't know about that. But I wanna thank each of you, and I know I appreciate your time and value your time, and really thank you so, thank you for being here, because I am truly grateful. I wanna thank each of you, Mike Lan, the staff, Miller, council. By the way, what Mr. Kim agreed, he said that you guys are gonna buy a dinner going around, and so, that, that was the translation. But, you know, for, for putting up with me, teaching me, guiding me, sharing a piece of your knowledge, trusting me, supporting me, encouraging me, walking with me, giving me a hug when time is, and especially for praying for me and my family. I am really truly blessed to have all of you in my life. My wife, my daughter, sons, sisters, brother-in-laws, friends, as extended family, brothers, sisters, moms and dads, teachers, advisors, counselors, I can go on and on. But it boils down to this, all of you are blessings to me. I am sad and emotional, but at the same time, I know you're in good hands with the current city staff, mayor, council members, and our newly-elected council of Mitch. I just wanna say thank you for being part of my blessing, being part of my story. I will cherish it forever. I am grateful.
Thank you, John. We have a city council meeting coming up next, so you're welcome to stick around for that. It's always lots of fun. We've got swearing in of several positions, as well as our newest council member, and I invite you to stay for that. And without that, please stick around and give your regards to John. Thank you very much for coming out tonight.
You guys ready? Good evening, everybody. The time, good evening, everybody. The time is seven thirty-nine PM, and we will move into the regular session of the Capel City Council. Just as an administrative note, persons wishing to speak during our citizens' appearance or any of the public hearings must sign the register located outside the council chambers and list your address. Tonight, we're honored to have the honor guard of the Capel Tonight, we're honored to have the honor guard of the Capella Fire Department present the flags, but first, we're going to have an invocation by Reverend Alex Johanan. So please stand for the prayer and then remain standing for the pledge. Thank you.
Almighty God, our everlasting God, on this auspicious occasion, we beseech you to grant us your blessings and mercies. We thank you for creating the entire universe and all, everything in it. We also thank you for preserving them for your glory. We bear hearts in your presence now and pray that you will empower us to carry out your will and purpose. We thank you for the United States of America and the America's democracy that we hold on to in the general administration of the country, state and city. We pray for all the firefighters, police officers, emergency personnel, public works department, and city staff who work day and night for the welfare of the people of the city. Today, as we, we have gathered together in the city of Capella, Texas, we pray for your blessings upon the elected mayor, pro temp mayor, and all the elected officials, staff and workers. Guide and lead them in the city's administration and all walks of life. God, we acknowledge that you remain as Lord and master over everything. Therefore, we pray that you fill the elected officials and city staff with your wisdom to hold on to all that is true and noble, in order to glorify you and carry out their responsibilities with the spirit of righteousness and justice, grandest unity and the spirit of reconciliation, so that the city will prosper and all would rejoice in the elected officials carrying out their responsibilities. Lord, we pray that you bless everyone present here today. May peace prevail in the city and your great name will be glorified. We ask this in Jesus' precious name. Amen.
Left, face. Present. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Order. Arms. Right, face. Forward. Arms.
Thank you. Please be seated.
Item number six is swearing-in of the mayor and council members for places four, five, and six. I would like to invite our municipal court judge, Sandra White, to please come forward. And Judge White, I've said this before, but we don't routinely look forward to seeing you in your court, but you're welcome here anytime.
Thank you. I appreciate the invitation. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Wes Mays.
I, Wes Mays.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To faithfully execute.
To faithfully execute.
The duties of mayor.
The duties of mayor.
Of the city of Capella.
Of the city of Capella.
State of Texas.
State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of the state, and of this state.
And of this state.
And the charter and ordinances.
And the charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Capella.
Of the city of Capella.
So help you God.
So help you God.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, thank you very much, Judge White. In all honesty, I make light of your service that you provide for the city, but we really do treasure what you do for us, so thank you very much. I wanted to thank the citizens of Capella, seeing an outgoing congressman, or city councilman, I'm getting ahead of myself. Like, that's embarrassing. Like Mayor Pro Tem John June talk about all the city's services and services that he's done to the citizens is really umbling. One of the things I would like to do, though, is thank everyone for electing me to another term for three years. I'm very proud of what we've done, and I'm not going to go on because we could be here for hours talking about all the great things that the city has done. But I would like to thank my family for the support they've given me over the years. I was chastised by one of my family members for not recognizing them at the last swearing-in three years ago, and I kind of did it on purpose because my wife is very much like Judy June. She doesn't really like a whole lot of attention, but my wife is really the reason that I'm successful. Whenever I'm going off the wall at home, she's the one that says, "Calm down, take it easy, don't worry about it, it'll be good." So I really have to thank Linda for where we are today. And then to keep us grounded in our civic duties is my son-in-law, Michael. Michael is, I don't know exactly what you want to call him, but he's not exactly the most straightforward city servant, but he does definitely keep us focused on what's real and what needs to be done. Probably the most grounded person in the entire family is my daughter, Allison, who has always a sense of reasonableness. And of course, then, there is the newest grandbaby of the family, our first, Ms. Charlotte Rose is here tonight, so we're excited to have her for her first campaign and election. And then I'd also like to thank my son and his fiancee, Chris and Catherine, for coming in for Plano for tonight. So thank you very much. I really love you guys and thank you for being here. Judge, let's get on with the show as it says.
Okay, next up, councilperson Kevin Neville. That wonderful. All right. If you'll raise your right hand, please, councilman, and repeat after me.
I, Kevin Neville.
I, Kevin Neville.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To faithfully execute the duties.
To faithfully execute the duties.
Of City Council, place four.
Of City Council, place four.
Of the city of Capella.
Of the city of Capella.
State of Texas.
State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And the charter and ordinances.
And the charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Capella.
Of the city of Capella.
So help you God.
So help me God.
You're welcome to use the microphone.
I didn't know if we were doing better.
You're welcome.
I have the mic again.
What did you say, John?
First of all, I just want to say thank you guys so much for all showing up for me in my swearing-in. I really do appreciate it, so, no, I'm really excited. Again, the trust that was given to me by the citizens for the first three years, I really do appreciate that. I love serving this city. It's such a great blessing. First of all, I got to recognize my family that were up here, my beautiful wife, Amanda, and my kids, Claire and Lucas. Thank you guys for all of your support. And, you know, I get this from my son sometimes, like, Daddy, you're going to another meeting? And I am, I am, but I want to leave Capella a better place for my kids as they grow up, so very excited about that. Last time my son was here, he was actually in a wheelchair because he broke his leg, so thanks for being on both of your feet there, buddy, I appreciate it. Last thing I just wanted to say is I lost my grandmother two weeks ago, and she was an amazing civil servant, and she was one of the reasons that inspired me to run, so this one's for you, Grandma. Thank you.
Councilperson-elect Ramesh Premkumar. All right, we're ready?
Yes.
All right. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Ramesh Premkumar.
I, Ramesh Premkumar.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To faithfully execute the duties.
Faithfully execute the duties.
Of City Council, place five.
Of City Council, place five.
Of the city of Capella.
Of the city of Capella.
State of Texas.
State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my abilities.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Capella.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Capella.
So help you God.
So help me God.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to thank my family, including my sister and her entire family, and my entire campaign team, mostly made of my buddies that went to school with me in undergrad. Can you please give a cheer? As well as my buddies who went to grad school with me, and all the wonderful friends and neighbors that I've made in Dallas, and to the fantastic people of Capella who place their trust in me and elect me to this role. Thank you.
So one other, one other little thing we've got going. Now, I noticed that you had a city button that somebody gave you for your role on the Smart Cities Board. I can't imagine who gave that to you. But we got an official one now for the City Council, so sit with me just a second.
Thank you. All right. Anybody to join you? Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Bijou Matthew.
I, Bijou Matthew.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To faithfully execute.
To faithfully execute.
The duties of City Council, place six.
The duties of Council, place six.
Of the city of Capella.
City of Capella.
The state of Texas.
The state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
Do the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and.
Depend.
Defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
The laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And the charter.
And the charter.
And ordinances.
And the ordinance.
Of the city of Capella.
The city of Capella.
So help you God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Mayor. First of all, I want to thank Reverend Alex Johanan for doing the invocation for today. We appreciate it. I want to thank all the supporters who are here today. It's been working with you. It's been a long time that I have worked with you all, and thanks for providing me the support that I needed in the City Council for the past six years. I do really appreciate it, and I'll do my best of my ability at just sworn in for the next three years. I want to thank my family. My wife, Shiji, is here. My son Noah is here. My mom, all the way from India, is here. Thank you for coming, for this swearing-in. I appreciate it. And most of all, the most important people I want to thank, the citizens of Capella. You have trusted me with this job. I'm very thankful, I'm graceful, for this job that I'm doing. I hope I'm doing the best job. I didn't have any opposition this time. I'm thankful for this opportunity that you all have given me. I'll promise you that I'll do my best going forward for the next three years. Thank you very much.
All right, moving down our agenda. Item number seven is a proclamation designating the week of May 19 through 25, '24, as Emergency Medical Services Week. Chief, could I get you to come on down? I sound like Bob Barker saying, "Come on down." Thank you for joining me. Chief, whereas emergency medical services are a vital public service and is provided by the Capella Fire Department, and whereas members of the Capella Fire Department are ready to provide advanced life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas emergency medical services have grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continued education to enhance their life-saving skills, and whereas it is inappropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical service.
Absolutely. You know, I just wanted to just take a moment, you know, talking about emergency medical services, how important that is for our city and our community. You know, this council, I think, has embraced that with Fire Station Five coming online. And, you know, Chief, you've given us multiple presentations just about, you know, preserving, you know, technically preserving that ISO Class 1 rating, but really what that means is that we're trying to provide the maximum amount of life-saving service that we can to our citizens. So, thank you for being an amazing steward to safety, you know, to our entire community, and thank you for continuing to educate us about what this community needs to be as safe as possible. So, thank all of you guys for all the amazing work that you do. We really do appreciate it.
All right. Item number eight on the agenda is a proclamation designating the week of May 19th through 25th as National Public Works Week, and I believe Mr. Garza is on his way down. Now, Mike, you do all the public works all by yourself, right?
That's right.
Oh. I don't bite, believe it or not. All right. Whereas Public Works employees design, construct, operate, and maintain infrastructure, facilities, and equipment that are of vital importance to the health, safety, welfare, and high quality of life of the citizens of Capella, and whereas these infrastructures, facilities, and equipment could not be provided without the dedicated service teamwork and innovation of Public Works employees, and whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and business leaders to gain knowledge of and maintain an interest in public works, and whereas the year 2024 marks the 64th Annual National Public Work Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now, there, I, West Mays Mayor of the City of Capella, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19th through 25th, 2024, as National Public Works Week in the City of Capella, and encourage all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and the City of Capella in support of our public work employees to recognize the substantial contributions they make while providing and protecting our health, safety, welfare, and quality of life. In witness thereof, I've set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Capella to be affixed as 14th Day of May, 2024. Did you have a few words you'd like to say?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. My name is Mike Garza, and I serve as the Director of Public Works for the City of Capella. I have a team up here with me, and, you know, Public Works is one of those teams that work behind the scenes. We like to say if things are going well and we don't receive any phone calls, which means your toilets are flushing and your water's running, the streets are in good shape, the traffic signals are on green, and you get to drive through town. So, it's one of those things that we do. Our Public Works Department has many teams that manage many assets and infrastructure, and we take pride in maintaining those. So, it's a privilege to serve the residents of Capella. Thank you.
Councilmember Walker, I believe you had something to say?
I just wanted to just take a moment, you know, talking about emergency medical services, how important that is for our city and our community. You know, this council, I think, has embraced that with Fire Station Five coming online. And, you know, Chief, you've given us multiple presentations just about, you know, preserving, you know, technically preserving that ISO Class 1 rating, but really what that means is that we're trying to provide the maximum amount of life-saving service that we can to our citizens. So, thank you for being an amazing steward to safety, you know, to our entire community, and thank you for continuing to educate us about what this community needs to be as safe as possible. So, thank all of you guys for all the amazing work that you do. We really do appreciate it.
All right. Item number eight on the agenda is a proclamation designating the week of May 19th through 25th as National Public Works Week, and I believe Mr. Garza is on his way down. Now, Mike, you do all the public works all by yourself, right?
That's right.
Oh. I don't bite, believe it or not. All right. Whereas Public Works employees design, construct, operate, and maintain infrastructure, facilities, and equipment that are of vital importance to the health, safety, welfare, and high quality of life of the citizens of Capella, and whereas these infrastructures, facilities, and equipment could not be provided without the dedicated service teamwork and innovation of Public Works employees, and whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and business leaders to gain knowledge of and maintain an interest in public works, and whereas the year 2024 marks the 64th Annual National Public Work Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now, there, I, West Mays Mayor of the City of Capella, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19th through 25th, 2024, as National Public Works Week in the City of Capella, and encourage all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and the City of Capella in support of our public work employees to recognize the substantial contributions they make while providing and protecting our health, safety, welfare, and quality of life. In witness thereof, I've set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Capella to be affixed as 14th Day of May, 2024. Did you have a few words you'd like to say?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. My name is Mike Garza, and I serve as the Director of Public Works for the City of Capella. I have a team up here with me, and, you know, Public Works is one of those teams that work behind the scenes. We like to say if things are going well and we don't receive any phone calls, which means your toilets are flushing and your water's running, the streets are in good shape, the traffic signals are on green, and you get to drive through town. So, it's one of those things that we do. Our Public Works Department has many teams that manage many assets and infrastructure, and we take pride in maintaining those. So, it's a privilege to serve the residents of Capella. Thank you.
Councilmember Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. My name is Mike Garza, and I serve as the Director of Public Works for the City of Capella. I have a team up here with me, and, you know, Public Works is one of those teams that work behind the scenes. We like to say if things are going well and we don't receive any phone calls, which means your toilets are flushing and your water's running, the streets are in good shape, the traffic signals are on green, and you get to drive through town. So, it's one of those things that we do. Our Public Works Department has many teams that manage many assets and infrastructure, and we take pride in maintaining those. So, it's a privilege to serve the residents of Capella. Thank you.
Councilmember Walker, I believe you had something to say?
I just wanted to thank Mike, you and your team. You know, like you say, you know, y'all do so many wonderful things that no one ever knows about, and yet it guarantees we have clean drinking water and that we save millions of gallons of water because of our median design and the interconnection with Lewisville and Grapevine and the lift station, and everything that you work on is really vital to our quality of life, and yet, you know, you're kind of the unsung heroes. So, I just want to thank you for all that you do to make our life as good as it is here in town and to keep everything working the way it should. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Carroll?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Garza, the rest of staff, sort of reiterating what Mr. Walker is saying, we really thank you for what you do. A city should do, in my opinion, two primary things, public safety, public works. Those are core elements of what a city should do, and we need to do it well. I love hearing from citizens when they call and say they ran into somebody in our Public Works Department, and they were extremely knowledgeable, and they were extremely, had a great demeanor, and at times you even have to, you have to bring a situation down by your own demeanor, because usually people are upset when they're talking with you because something's, water's flowing where it's not supposed to be flowing or something. So, the staff does a great job interacting with our citizens and really publicizing how great this staff is across the board and everything. So, I don't want it to ever be underappreciated how important Public Works is to not only this city but all cities, but y'all do a phenomenal job with that. So, thank you very much for what you do.
Councilmember Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, Public Works Department, their job doesn't end at 5:00 PM because emergencies aren't scheduled during regular business hours. And when you think of all the things that have occurred over the past couple of years with the big freeze and, you know, telephone poles being knocked down, those things just didn't happen when they were supposed to. And, you know, there's a lot of people on call that have to respond to these things, and thankfully, we have an outstanding group of people here that just do a fantastic job, and thank you. You guys are the unsung heroes, and we really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. Mike and your team, you guys are doing an excellent work. That's why we approved the new building for you. That's going to be fantastic things for you. New locker room too, right? Yeah, I just want to echo what everybody said. It's, you know, we always get feedback from the residents, right? If something breaks, people complain, but the compliments we also receive from the residents, how well you got. We still have to fix all the lights on the dent and taps, synchronizing them, right? Mayor mentioned that last time. Thank you for your service. We appreciate it.
We got that one under control.
What is it? You got it under control?
Mike and I have a meeting later this week.
Oh, okay. So, I won't get involved. Thank you again. Once again, appreciate it.
Councilmember, I keep wanting to call you Councilmember Ramesh. That's just not going to work. Prem Kumar?
Mayor, you can call me Councilmember Ramesh anytime. So, the residents of Capella really enjoy the quality of life they have here, and I think your department, Mike, all of you are a big reason for that. Thank you for your service.
Thank you very much, guys. Thanks. Thanks. Oh, she's wanting a photo? Hey, thank you. All right. Item number nine is a proclamation designing the month of May as National Water Safety Month, and I'd like to invite Jessica Carpenter and her crew down. Oh, we have a big crew.
Actually, Trinity, I'm going to pass the honor over here to Trinity.
They told me you weren't here. All right. Now, this is a bad sign because this morning at the State of Education, we were challenged to create a chorus line for the Capella City Council. So, that's coming up for next year. So, not going to be led by me, though. All right. Whereas citizens of Capella recognize a vital role that swimming and aquatics-related activities relate to good physical and mental health and enhance the quality of life for all people, and whereas the citizens of Capella understand the essential role that education regarding the topic of water safety plays and preventing drowning and recreational water-related injuries, and whereas the City of Capella is aware of the contributions made by recreational water industry in developing safe swimming facilities, aquatic programs, home pools and spas, and related activities providing healthy places to recreate, learn, and grow confidence and self-worth, which contributes to the quality of life in our community. Whereas the citizens of Capella recognize the ongoing efforts and commitments to educate the public on pool and spa safety issues, and whereas Greg Abbott, Governor of Texas, has proclaimed May to be Water Safety Month. Whereas the citizens of Capella understand the vital importance of commuting water safety rules and programs to individuals of all ages, whether they're owners of private pools, user of public swimming facilities, or visitors to water parks. Therefore, now, I, West Mays Mayor of the City of Capella, do hereby proclaim the month of May as National Water Safety Month, and in witness thereof, I've set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Capella to be affixed as 14th Day of May, 2024. And I'm guessing you had a few words to say?
Hello, I am Trinity Klebsig. I'm the aquatics coordinator, coordinator, supervisor over at the Corps. So, I do all things pools, and I am so glad that we are here tonight. We've brought our lovely mascot right here, Margot the Manatee. So, if you see Margot around during the summertime, she'll be hot, but she's ready to teach you all about how to swim safely. Speaking of that, on Friday last week, luckily, I was able to get some inside and into Town Center Elementary and able to talk to them about water safety. So, if some of your kids came home from Town Center Elementary with a couple extra things, thank you so much for letting me be here tonight. We're so excited to have water safety through May and also through the rest of the summer when we're actually swimming. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, thank you very much. You know, I do spend quite a bit of my time at the Corps, but not in the water, but I do see all the citizens coming in every morning way before I get there, and the dedication to the aquatic sports is unbelievable. So, thank you for all that you do. Thank you. Okay. Item number 10 is our citizens' appearance. We do have one ride-in. So, persons wishing to speak must sign the register and list their address. Presentations by individuals will be limited to two minutes each. An individual's speaker time may be extended for an additional two minutes with approval of the majority of the council members present. Persons signed up to speak will be called in the order that they signed up. No personal attacks by any speaker shall be made against any member of the council, the mayor, individual, group, or corporation. There will be no comments or deliberations from the City Council due to the Texas Open Meetings Record Act. Our one speaker that I believe was hoping to speak is Mr. Andrew Kim.
With our deepest appreciation, we Oh, yeah. My name is Andrew Kim. Not resident of Capella. I'm living in Portford.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, if I might chime in, he wants to give you an appreciation plaque, so if you could maybe come down and receive it?
Yeah, that's better.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir. With our deepest appreciation, we proudly honor Mayor, West Mayor, City of Capella. In recognition and appreciation of your dedicated service and your continued support to Korean-American community, thank you from the bottom of our heart. May 14, 2024. Andrew Kim, President, Korean Association of Dallas. Thank you.
I'm not supposed to comment, but I think I will anyway. What Mr. Kim didn't state was this involves being invited to a number of galas and festivals that are very educational, and very informative. They're also very fattening because there's also lots of food and very good Korean food, and I end up spending many hours at the gym after each festival. So, thank you very much. All right. Item number 11 is our consent agenda. The consent agenda is routine in nature and is generally enacted in one motion. These items have been previously approved through the budget or past council action. Any item may be pulled and considered separately. Full descriptions of each item are available on the screen. Council, do you have any items that you wish to have pulled from the agenda? Seeing none, I will accept a motion. Councilmember Walker?
Thank you, Mayor Mays. I'll move for approval of the consent agenda as proposed.
Seconded by Councilmember Neves. All in favor?
Walker, Carroll, Neves, Prem Kumar, Matthew Hill, in favor. None opposed. The motion carries.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Item number 12 is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing and state that persons wishing to speak during the public hearing must sign the register. We actually don't have any signed, anybody signed up, so we're going to skip the reading of the rest of that. Mary, would you please read the item into the record?
Yes, sir. Item number 12, public hearing, consider approval of a zone change request from PD-183R-C to PD-183R2-C to approve a detailed site plan for a 46,265-square-foot fine arts building, a 4,600-square-foot tennis building, and field equipment event areas on 63.478 acres of property located at 185 West Parkway Boulevard. So this item deals with Kapel High School. The Kapel High School site has expanded over the years to include new buildings and facilities as deemed necessary by the school board. This current round of construction will see a new fine arts building, a new tennis building, and a new field events area constructed. This overall aerial shows the location of the two, of the two proposed buildings and field event activity in relation to the existing buildings and structures on-site. So this is currently what's on the ground. We have a new tennis center going to be located at the north end of the site, adjacent to the tennis facility. Bless you. A fine arts building to the west of the site, and then an activity field just south of the proposed fields or fine arts building. So the first building we're going to talk about is the tennis, the new tennis building. This 4,600 tennis center will be constructed on the northern portion of the site, adjacent to the existing tennis courts and existing building, which is, again, central to the site. The building is one-story sprinklered, will have offices for coaching, staff, storage, and locker rooms. The facility will, will be constructed in a portion of the existing parking lot. The other, the other building proposed is the fine arts building. At 46,265 square feet, the building will have a band hall, storage areas, offices, loggers, and other instrument rooms, practice rooms, et cetera. This is also proposed to be a one-story sprinkler building. This building is proposed to be constructed on the western portion of this property, which currently operates as a baseball field. This building will house band, choir, color guard, dance, and cheerleaders. The last item proposed with this zoning is the construction of a long jump and pole vault area just south of the new fine arts building, which currently operates as a field, as a ball field as well. So now onto landscaping. The area around the new tennis building will not have any additional landscaping. What you see on the screen here is the new fine arts building, and it is proposed to have landscaping surrounding the building and parking area abutting the building. A dense living screen exists along the western border of the property, shielding the residents from the building. Twenty new trees are proposed onsite with additional shrubs, grasses, and perennials. Just south of this, in the new field area, we also have a dense living screen that exists that extends down the western property line and screens the new outdoor field area. And as you can see, the majority of this space is green space. Now, we're going to take a look at the elevations. Both buildings will be constructed of brick. The fine arts building will have an accent brick design on one elevation that you can see on the front of the building. The door entrances will be, will have metal canopies, and there are downspouts around the exterior of the building. So here's a rendering of the proposed band hall. And then here we have a rendering of the entrance into the fine arts building. The tennis center will have the same main brick with metal canopies over the doorways and metal downspouts. The existing tennis building and the proposed new building will be adjacent to one another and will be fenced in together. And then here's a rendering of the proposed tennis center entrance. So what we're looking at now is a blow-up area of the proposed signage that's going to be on the building. So the top sign is Kapel Tennis will be on brushed aluminum letters over the main entrance, measuring 14 square feet. And then there's proposed signage on the building for the fine arts rehearsal building in brushed aluminum letters over the main entrance, measuring 27 square feet. As this is a zone change request, we did send out letters, 78 notices within 200 feet as required by state law, and additional 250 courtesy notices within 800 feet. We had three people calling, essentially asking what was happening, but with no objection. We had one response in opposition, but not to the proposal, but to the students littering, parking in the, in the neighborhood, and that, that type of thing. So the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval of the request subject to the following conditions. One, that there may be additional comments during the detailed engineering review. Two, to file the plat showing the revised fire lanes and easements. Three, PD conditions, A, to allow the landscaping as proposed, and B, to approve the site plan as presented. This is the end of my presentation, but there is someone from the school board as well who is available to answer questions.
Counsel, do you have any questions for Mrs. Oswald? I see at least one applicant out there. Mr. Grant, did you have anything you'd like to say? No is a good answer.
Thank you, Mayor Mays. Councilmembers, city managerland, it's, my name is Sid Grant, for those of you who don't know me. I was, about four years ago, I retired from Kapel ISD after 23 years, and now I'm back helping with the bond program as kind of this bond program manager. So just thank you so much. One of the main things I want to say is Mary and her team have been amazing helping us through this process, and we just, we truly appreciate all that you and she and her, her team have done. If, if you'd like, I can give a brief explanation of what some of the build, what's going to be held in the building, and then what's going to happen in Kapel High School where those programs leave the main building and go to the new building.
I'm detecting contentment up here, so. I did have one question, I'm sorry, this may be more for Mary, but it looked like to me that the tennis center was infringing on the, the parking and the access area to the parking area behind the football field. Did I misread the, the plot on that?
Yeah.
I did. That's, that's usual.
It does come out slightly, so they'll lose, I believe, eight parking spaces, and, but it, but it doesn't encroach, or it doesn't come past the fire lane that goes by.
Okay, thank you. That was all, that was the only thing I saw.
Sure.
Parking is one thing, roadway is another. Councilmember Neves.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to close the public hearing and approve Agenda Item 12 with the conditions listed.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilmember Carroll. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Walker, Carroll, Neves, Prem Kumar, Matthew Hill, in favor. None opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Sid. Thank you, Mary. Item number 13 is Consider a Resolution Directing Publication of Notice of Intent to Issue Certificates of Obligation and Authorizing the Mayor to Sign. Ms. Tien.
Good evening, mayor and counsel. This evening, staff is recommending the issuance of certificate of obligations in the amount not to exceed $53.5 million for various water system projects, a street project, and facility projects that includes a fifth fire station and the construction of a service center, as well as remodeling of the existing service center. So specifically, the projects are, and the funding amounts are $24 million for Royal Lane, 12.5 million for the service center projects, and then 11.5 million for Fire Station Number Five, for a total of $48 million. That would be tax-supported portion of the bonds. Then, the water and sewer system projects to be funded by this bond issuance are $4 million for various water and sewer system projects, and then $1 million for the water, water system redundancy project. So that totals $5 million, and that portion of the bonds would be funded through water and sewer revenues. So the not-to-exceed amount also includes an estimated $500,000 for the bond issue costs. So speaking with our financial advisor and bond counsel, the not-to-exceed amount is an estimated amount that is revised later when the bond issue process, as we move through the bond issue process, we cannot exceed the amount of $53.5 million, however, that amount could go down. So this is the first step in the process of issuing bonds. This item directs staff to publicize the notice of intent and to issue certificate of obligations in the newspaper for two consecutive weeks. So the first notice would be published this Saturday, and the 18th, with the second notice published on May 25th. And then you would, there would be an ordinance for your consideration on July 9th. So I have Jason Hughes, who is our financial advisor with Hilltop Securities, present, and both of us are here to answer any questions that you might have this evening.
Thank you very much, counsel. Any questions? So I'm just going to summarize, this is just a maximum amount. If we decide to fund any, any one of the projects with an alternate source of funding, it doesn't mean that we have to use this money for that.
That is correct.
Councilmember Carroll.
Thank you, Mayor. Since you came out, I was going to go ahead and ask, ask a question about the market in general, and I know we're not, we're not at the point of actually issuing any certificates yet, but in general, what is the market, how good is the market for issuing debt at this point? I mean, with rates being up in general, and I know, I'm assuming these are tax-exempt rate, tax-exempt bonds.
Correct, they would be.
But still, what's the market like at the moment?
So it's been very favorable. I had one pricing today, it's actually a 25-year term. We're contemplating 20 years here, but the 25-year term was 3.97%. So the 20-year term, I would estimate, is around 3.7 to 3.8, maybe 3.85%. So sub-four as it stands right now.
Okay, so still good, and still a lot of buyers at the moment?
100%.
A lot of liquidity?
The client that I had today, which is actually lower rated than you are, we had 12 bids, if I remember correctly, for that. So yes, there is absolutely good demand, especially Kapel as a AAA, I will have no problem selling it.
Okay, so that's good. And, and this is, and we'll have discussion later on about how, what the debt strategy is going to be, is that correct? Is that fair, Ms. Tien?
Yes, so at your council retreat, Jason and I have been working on different strategies to present to you on how to repay the bonds.
Okay, great, thanks.
I would be happy to accept a motion at this point. Councilmember Carroll.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve item number, item 13. It's not a public hearing.
Councilmember Hill, seconded?
Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Thank you for the reminder.
Thank you. I earned my money right there.
Yes, you did. The city attorney reminded me of a piece that I needed to say before we go to that, that step. So, Mr. Carroll, if you will, if you will set aside your motion for a moment, you can...
I will withdraw my motion.
So I would ask to call for a motion to adopt a resolution directing publication of notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation. Mr. Carroll.
Thank you, Mayor. I so move.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilmember Hill. All in favor?
Walker, Carroll, Neves, Prem Kumar, Matthew Hill, in favor. None opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming all the way, way out here for five minutes of work.
My pleasure.
Okay, item number 14 is Consider Declaring a Vacancy of an Alternate Member Place on the Board of Adjustments. Ms. Owens.
Thank you, Mayor. This item before you tonight is to consider declaring a vacancy of an alternate member place on the Board of Adjustment. This appointment was made on January 1st of 2024 for a two-year term, and there are certain requirements that must be fulfilled when an appointment is made. Unfortunately, we have not had that done, and we are looking to declare a vacancy because the office was never fully taken on by the appointee. I'm happy to answer any questions for you.
Counsel, any questions? Councilmember Neves.
Thank you, Mayor. And just to clarify for the public, so multiple good faith efforts were, were, were made to make sure that this individual understood the requirements, and I just wanted to make sure that that was, that was done.
Sure, yes, sir, absolutely. We offer orientation, we made multiple contacts through email, to no avail.
Excellent, thank you for that.
Councilmember Neves.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Agenda Item 14.
Seconded by Councilmember Walker, all in favor?
Walker, Carroll, Neves, Prem Kumar, Matthew Hill, in favor. None opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you very much. And item number 15, this is Consider Appointment of the Mayor Pro Tim as Required by Section 3.05 of the Home Real Charter. We have had a, the, the, the selection of the Mayor Pro Tim is designated by our charter to be a member of the city council and is elected by the city council at the first regular meeting following the elections, so, such as today. The Mayor Pro Tim's duties are to act as the mayor during the disability or the absence of the mayor, and has the capacity to have the rights of mayor conferred upon them at that point. This, the Mayor Pro Tim is elected by this council, it is a, it is a choice of the council. The Mayor Pro Tim serves at will of the council. Traditionally, we have had a rotating membership for the Mayor Pro Tim, and it gets basically the person that hasn't served the least amount of time for the longest time. And so when you take a look at the people that have never served Mayor Pro Tim, that would be Kevin Neves, Don Carroll, Joe Walker, and Ramesh, Prem Kumar, and the person that has been on the council the longest is Kevin Neves, so he would be the next person in line. The other three, Mark Hill, Brianna, Hina Hosa, and Bijou have all served as Mayor Pro Tim, so the four that have not take priority. So with that, our typical selection would be Councilmember Neves. And with that big, long explanation, I would accept a nomination. Councilmember, I think you've both tied each other.
Let Don do it.
He beat me by 30 days. I want it clear, he beat me by 30 days. Nevertheless, I move to appoint Mr. Neves as Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you very much. Seconded by Councilmember Walker. I'm sorry, down here, they have my attention in this direction, sorry, down there. All in favor?
I can vote for myself?
Yes.
Walker, Carroll, Neves, Prem Kumar, Matthew Hill, in favor. None opposed, the motion carries.
All right, thank you very much. Item number 16 is a city manager reports for project updates, future agendas, and direction from the work session. Mayor and counsel, thank you. First of all, I want to compliment your family as they're getting ready to leave. That baby slept through the whole meeting. Now she's awake, just in time for y'all to go home.
I heard grim.
All right, so South Beltline, all lanes are open, the contractor is working on punch list items, that's why every once in a while, you may see a lane closed. Dark continues to work on the franchise relocations at Freeport and storm drain installation across Freeport. On Woodhurst, the contractor is preparing to pave half of the street from Sandy Knoll to the cul-de-sac. Andy Brown Park West, stream bank repairs. Reinforcing mats and soil anchors are being placed on the damaged section. Trail users should, should still avoid using this area. Village Parkway Ground Storage Tank Rehab, the work is complete and the tanks are back in service, just in time for the summer. The contractor is finishing up on the punch list items. The retail and dining survey, there are...
The retail and dining survey, there are only a couple of days left. As a matter of fact, the final day is Thursday, May 16th, so we're asking for our residents to provide the feedback on their retail and dining preferences. Residents are encouraged to take the survey to help us understand which retail stores and restaurants you enjoy most and which new offerings you would like to see in the future, should we be able to be successful in recruiting here. So, Mayor, that concludes my comments.
Thank you very much. Item number 17 is the mayor and council reports on recent and upcoming events. Just as a reminder, the Fit City Challenge ends tomorrow, May 15th. If you have not joined the challenge, make sure you have entered your workouts so that they can be counted. We are in third place, by the way, right now. Join us in celebrating the 50th anniversary of the Cosby Library on May 18th from 9:45 to noon in the Town Center Plaza. If there's inclement weather, we'll be in the library meeting room. Just as a side note, one of our citizens or one of our residents was on the library board 25 years ago when the 25th anniversary was celebrated, and she had the original Jubilee handbook that had some photos of some very interesting city founders, including Mr. Hager and a couple of the former mayors. And I will have that on hand, just in case anybody would like to see them back then. Really looking forward to the 50th anniversary at the library and invite the public to come out. Last week, Mr. Land and I traveled to Austin to testify before the Comp Controlers Committee on 3.334. We gave our prepared remarks in our 10 minutes or less designated time spot. In addition to the two of us, the attorney for Round Rock spoke, the mayor of Helotes, Texas spoke, and John Kroll spoke. There were five speakers and we were out in 28 minutes, so it was a quick day. This is in preparation for the lawsuit that is now scheduled for October. Item number 18, city council reports concerning items of community involvement with no council action or deliberation permitted. I believe we have a report from Mr. Walker on the Kapel Arts Center Foundation.
Thank you, Mayor Mays. Fresh off the success of the Caribbean Gala in February, the Kapel Arts Center Foundation sponsored the presented show Bohemian Queen on April 6th. The foundation hosted the first-ever VIP member reception before the 8:00 PM show, complete with a signature drink, the Killer Queen, heavy appetizers, and rocking queen trivia. The point of this was twofold, focus on selling out this incredible show and host a fun event for CACF members to enrich their Kapel Arts Center experience. While the 8:00 PM show sold out and the 65-plus people who attended the pre-show reception had a blast. The foundation also hosted its second annual member gratitude reception on May 1st at San Daniele and presented the foundation's yearly impact report. The Arts Center's managing director, Janine, unveiled the 24-25 season for the first time, and we can't wait to experience it. And that's the Arts Center tagline for next season. Next up for the foundation, they're already putting together a gala committee for the 2025 Gala. If you know people who love the arts and like to party, please send them to Lee Walker, the brilliant president of the foundation, at cacfpresident@gmail.com. And in October, the foundation has two huge events, a members-only celebration on the season's opening night on October 18, and incredibly popular annual dog show on October 5. For the first time ever, there will be a presented show at the CAC the afternoon and night of the dog show called Canine Stars. We're looking forward to a possum day, yes, I meant to say that, of activities to engage new people and their furry friends with our amazing Arts Center. The CACF, the foundation is also awarding the first-ever scholarship for $2,000. The applications will be sent to both the CHS and New Tech counselors, and the deadline is June 30th. Students who attend Kapel ISD or live in the 75019 zip code are eligible to apply. And we have also just kicked off, the foundation just kicked off, the 24-25 membership campaign, so please go to the Kapel Arts Center website under the Get Involved tab to join. And that would conclude my report, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Item number 19 are public service announcements concerning items of community interest with no council action or deliberation. Do we have any public service announcements? Seeing none, item number 20, there was no necessary action from the executive session. Therefore, there being no further business before this council, we are adjourned at 8:45 PM.